Okay, it's 7 o'clock and I'll call the meeting to order of the Common Council of the City of Platteville. Today is Tuesday, February 24th, 2015, and we are in the council chambers. We'll start with roll call, Jan.
Dick Bonin.
Here, finally.
Ken Killian has been excused. Eileen Nichols has been excused. Amy Seboth Wilson.
Here.
Mike Den.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
And Barbara Stockhausen.
Here.
And as I start this meeting, I express condolences to Eileen on the death of her father this week and I express her regrets for not being here tonight. So, the first thing on our agenda tonight is a special presentation from the Platteville Regional Chamber of Commerce, I assume the tourism entity.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Kopp, Executive Director of the Platteville Regional Chamber, and what I handed out is our annual Tourism Entity Report for 2014. There's a lot of reading material in there. What we include are copies of the advertising that we do, our Platteville Community Guide, the Grant County Travel Planner, Tri-State Tourism Map. So you kind of get a sense of the type of marketing that we do in print. The middle section of your report is the editorial part that explains what we did. And every year, we submit an action plan to the city's tourism committee that outlines what we are going to be doing for the next year. So obviously, the 2004 action plan was approved over a year ago, and the full action plan, I want to make a note at the very end of the packet in the folder or the pocket, is the Tourism Action Plan for 2015, as well as the Strategic Plan for the Chamber for 2014 and 2015. So it all kind of works together. But what I want to draw your attention to is the editorial part. We had a good year. If we factor in, one of the gauges that we have is room tax revenue. In spite of the fact that we had a little disruptive June, July, August, September with the tornadoes, room tax was up over what was predicted. But going through this report, our Welcome Center takes up a majority of the tourism, the budget. But on page two, I highlighted some statistics that are probably most notable and things that the community may be most interested in. We entertained over 8,800 visitors in 2014. The number was down from 2013, which was a little bit of an odd thing considering our room tax was up. But we feel it was in large part because if you remember, the last winter was much harsher and the visitors just stayed home. And then while we had better than predicted room tax revenue during the quarters that were affected by the tornado, we're saying that the lodging properties saw a lot of contractors that were not necessarily driven to our building to be included in the visitor number. But in spite of that, 8,800 visitors did come through. We monitored and responded to over 9,700 emails, which is a challenge. That's a big number. If anybody has any time on their hands, would like to come down and help answer phones, tourism-related phone calls, and these are the phone calls that come in. We do not monitor what we send out, and that number is 4,500. So over 4,000 people, inquiries came in. The number of visitor packets that we mailed every year is getting smaller. In 2014, we mailed over 280. In our heyday, that used to be double that, but because of website now, more and more people are getting their initial information on the website. When they get to Platteville, they're coming in and picking up the brochures. We've been working really hard upgrading our website. It's very, much more interactive, and we've had a lot of positive feedback on that. Social media, we've been really, really honing in on that, too. And we launched our Facebook account less than two years ago, and we have 1,228 friends as of a couple of weeks ago when we put this together. And then I think one of the most mind-boggling numbers that I can offer you is that over the course of a year, approximately 27,500 brochures and publications and maps were dispersed from our office. That's a lot. That's a lot of publications. So, one of the things that I think is important for everybody to know that, because as I said earlier, we have copies of the print ads in here, so you can see that it's a generic promotion of the community. Some people ask, why do we still do print ads? Especially with our Travel Planner and the Community Guide. What we're seeing is that people go online to initially investigate a community, but when they get here, they want the paper. So they're coming in and picking that information up. So that's our time to, when they come in, to give them a lot more information about the community. We always make sure that people have the museum flyers and any events and that type of thing that are going on. And it's worked very, very well. We get a lot of compliments on the Welcome Center every year. So the Section Two is Destination Marketing, and that is the direct advertising that we do. And that's fairly self-explanatory. If anybody has any questions at any point, feel free to ask. Website and social media takes up about 12% of our budget, and it's very labor-intensive. Again, I think the results kind of speak for themselves. The programming that we have has remained very strong. One thing with the website and social media and print advertising that was different for us this year is that after the tornadoes hit, the Wisconsin Department of Tourism came to us and they told us they had developed a very special promotional package just for our community, once I reassured them that Platteville was open. There were so many misconceptions. We had truckers that would call and say, oh my gosh, we're not even going to come near there, thinking with all the things they saw in the news. So we relayed that to the Department of Tourism, and they came up with a phenomenal marketing package that promoted Platteville that cost us nothing. So because of the relationship we have with the department, they did, we were in print ads in Chicago and in a lot of the major markets that we really can't afford to market. So that, I think, is going to continue to bode well. That's going to play out on into the future. But a lot of what the department did was a lot through social media and through their website for us, so we're really thankful about that. Our calendar of events, it's amazing how many calendars are out there, that we try to keep our information, our community information on. So we like to think that we cover the bases. Another section is Public Relations. That's 7% of the budget. And we're constantly writing editorial for publications, issuing press releases, media kits to various media organizations, and a big component is the Wisconsin Department of Tourism. They have a $12 million budget, which is slightly bigger than ours, so we kind of tag along with them, and then wherever we're able to partner with them, we certainly do. We've always been big on regional tourism efforts, so we work very closely with the Grant County Tourism Council and the Tri-State Tourism Council. I sit on both of those boards this year. And we are able to ratchet up the marketing for our community through those, through that regional effort. The Department of Tourism has been a phenomenal partner for us. And in your report on page six, I have to show you, you have to look kind of close, but there's a colored photo there, that as a member of the Governor's Council on Tourism, we were invited to Madison to a press conference when Coach Bo Ryan was making the commercial that is set to debut on TV any day now. So he's in that photo, so that was pretty cool. And because of the Platteville ties he had, it was even made more special. So that is going to debut, as I said, here very shortly. But we partner with the Great River Road. There's going to be a Discover Wisconsin episode on the Great River Road. The Department of Tourism is promoting that. And obviously, Grant County has 57 miles of shoreline, so we take every opportunity to promote that with what we do, too, because we are the ones that have the lion's share of the lodging and the restaurants and the retail. So some people ask, well, why are we promoting things in Petosie? Well, it's because when we, people go to Petosie, they want somewhere else to go to, so we're drawing them in here. Our events and projects, the 17th Annual Historic Reenactment, I think Steve made a report on that some time ago. Very successful, and I don't know what else to say. It's very, very unusual for an event of that type to stay viable for 17 years, so plans are well underway for our 18th Annual. 67th Annual Dairy Days, I think most anybody can attest, it's the largest festival that we have, and it's a great, great time for our community to shine. Our Hometown Festival Week was, we had great attendance, and this was the fifth year for our Hometown Hog Roast. We had over 1,000 people in attendance. Plans are going along really well for that event. Last year, we created a new event for the first Saturday in May called Kickstart to Tourism, where we had the premiere for the Discover Wisconsin episode on motorcycling that showcases Platteville. We're still getting comments and referrals for that show. And then obviously, we do whatever we can to promote the mining and the Rollo Jameson Museum. I am a board member of the JMA currently. And the last part is Contract Administration. The additional comments on page 11, I think, are very important. We have been the tourism entity for the city since 1995. And in the back folder, there is a report that looks like this, that is put out every year by the Wisconsin Department of Tourism. They have a very, very in-depth way of garnering economic impact that, I always stress, is approved. The formulas that they use, the process they use, is definitely vetted by the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. So these are not made-up numbers. These are, and we've been told, because Platteville is the largest community in Grant County, again, the majority of the lodging, restaurants, and retail that all go into that, this report is for 2013. 2014 will be coming out early in May. But in 2013, the direct visitor spending for Grant County was $41.3 million. Department of Tourism says that we can conservatively claim half of that for Platteville. So economic impact for tourism for our community is over $20 million, and we expect that to continue to grow. We're hoping so. The Strategic Plan, as I mentioned, is in your packet, and I want to just touch that real quick. It's the top sheet. It's, what I'm referring to is the one for 2015. There's four parts to it. We have Promotion, Education, Tourism, and Operations. Of note, I want to just pinpoint the five objectives under our Tourism. We continue to support the completion of the Platteville Belmont Trail and identify proactive procedures that could lead to the development of a conference center in Platteville. Continue to build a strong community and regional network to help with promotion. And then something new that we're looking at for 2015 is analyze the potential to host a rural expo, which means ag, tourism, natural attractions. It's all about culinary, local foods, all of that. So we've had a first meeting, and we will, we're looking at doing that in the fall. So we anticipate that to be, it's, we had a large group meeting a couple of weeks ago and to gather information, and we're putting information together on what that could look like, but it's garnering a lot of excitement. And then the final objective for our plan for 2015 is we are working on a wish list for the 1% increase in room tax that took effect January 1st. Because we, the way room tax was set up initially, room tax was implemented January 1st, 1995. The Chamber started the program January 1st, 1995. We don't get a room tax check till the following quarter, so it's six weeks after we spend the money before we see what the previous quarter was. So we, I internally refer to it as deficit spending. So when we have the opportunity for 2015 with that 1% increase, we're building a wish list, and our budget for 2015 reflects 2014. When we get closer into, after the second part of the year, second half of the year, we're going to be able to have a better sense on how room tax revenue is faring. And if it is as strong as we hope, then we will be able to implement this wish list for possibly the rural expo or other marketing that the committees come up with and agree to. So, and we've been asked a number of times, well, what are you planning on spending that money on? All I can say is it's a group effort that we need a lot of input on. So just so that the city council's aware that we are not pre-spending that 1%, and how we factor that, I'm, what we did is every year when we set our budget, we base it on the previous year. We did not up it by 1% to include that increase. And then another thing is that after about 10 years, 2014 saw the Chamber being able to purchase our new entrance sign that is an electronic reader board. It is lit at night, which our other one was not. So we are able to promote both the fact that we are Travel Wisconsin Welcome Center and all of our community events. So I'm really anxious to kick that into high gear because it wasn't operational until in the fall. So when summer is here and we have all of our festivals and events going on, that reader board's going to be used quite heavily. The last piece in the editorial part is the financial statement that I received from our accountants, Fosse and Plimer, with their statement, and it's pretty simple. The room tax revenue for 2014 was $58,926. We spent $61,975, so we overspent, which left a net balance of $3,049. What I want to draw attention to is the advertising line item. That 9306 was higher than what we budgeted, but the Chamber also buys tourism, pays for some, for a portion of the tourism marketing. So the $3,049, we are not looking to anyone to fill that. The Chamber, that comes back, and the Chamber will be paying that, or has paid it. I know it's a lot of information. We're required to submit this to the city before the end of February. So if anybody has any questions tonight or at any point, feel free to give me a call, but this is officially the record that we are submitting for 2014.
Okay, thank you. Jan will show that it's been received in the minutes as a special presentation. Does anybody have any questions of Kathy?
I just think we need to give Kathy a hand for all this layout work here.
So will. Thank you. Okay, we'll move now into the council agenda. Consideration of the Consent Calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature, due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to me if you would prefer separate discussion and action on any of these items. First are the minutes from the February 10th regular council meeting. Second is the payment of bills. Third is appointments to boards and commissions, and I have none tonight. Fourth are licenses. One is a Class A liquor license to QuickTrip. A second is a temporary Class B fermented malt beverage license to St. Augie's Parish for their fish fries on March 6th and March 27th. And the other are one- and two-year operator licenses. Do I hear?
I make a motion to accept the cassette calendar.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the consent calendar as presented. We'll vote. Bonin.
Yes.
Seboth.
Yes.
Den.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda are Citizens' Comments, Observations, and Petitions, if any. That would have required somebody to fill out a green slip. I didn't get any. Jan, did you?
No.
All right, so I think we're moving through that part of the agenda. Next on the agenda are reports, committee reports. Water and Sewer Commission, Mr. Bonin.
I was not here, so we'll have to be.
We have to say no additions, huh?
Yeah, no additions.
And Eileen is not here for Library Board. Other reports that we had were Department Progress Reports. Is there anything of note that anyone wants to mention that's here as a department head? Otherwise, I would mention that when I read the Senior Center report, that the Senior Center is out and about publishing a newsletter, and that they have contracted with someone, I can't remember the name of the firm, and I don't have it up, but they've contracted with someone who's now selling advertising. And the guy that's selling the advertising, I think it's Liturgical Publications, now that I think about it, is Dan. And so Connie wrote in her memo, if Dan calls and says he's taking ads for a newsletter for the Senior Center, it's legitimate. There is a newsletter being published. So I just wanted to kind of mention that. Any other questions on Department Progress Reports? Okay, then we'll move to the action part of the agenda. There's one item on this. The final plat for the first edition to Golden Heights subdivision. And this would normally be?
Joe.
Joe.
Unfortunately, Joe is ill with the flu, so I will do my best to fill in form. I want to start by handing the council one of these.
Thank you.
What I'm passing out is the staff note that was included in your packet last city council meeting on February 10th. Unfortunately, somehow it got replaced in this council packet with a different memo. At our last meeting on February 10th, the council reviewed the proposal, the final plat for the first edition of Golden Heights, and there were five planned commission recommendations associated with the approval. And staff recommended approval of the first edition to Golden Heights Estate subdivision for the final plat. At the last council meeting, a question was raised regarding stormwater. And so if you look in your packet, we did add a new memo from Howard, the Public Works Director, about stormwater management and addressed the question that was raised regarding the costs thereof. But tonight, you're being asked to consider the final plat for the first edition of Golden Heights subdivision. And the applicant, I believe, is in the audience if anyone has questions.
Howard, would you like to please talk about your memo here in terms of the storm sewer extension?
Yes. One of the issues in the developer's agreement is an agreement for the city to provide an extension to the existing storm sewer culvert underneath Ready Drive. It's my estimate that culvert extension, the end wall or the opening for it and rip wrap associated with it, per this developer's agreement, would be a cost not to exceed $10,000. And I'm recommending that those be absorbed in the 2015 Storm Sewer Capital Project Budget Line item if you so choose to accept the plat.
Okay, questions from council members?
Okay. I would like to make a motion on this. I think that we should table this because Joe is not here tonight to answer some of our questions, and there's a lot of questions that we need, and information that we need. Because on the preliminary plat, it was accepted with some different language than we have on the final plat. In one point, it said that it would be, the final plat said that it would be divided into six parcels, five lots. In the preliminary plat, it said it would be divided into five lots. So there's a difference right there. Also, it was approved with some conditions, with the fill being recognized, and also with the, at that point, with the, with right now, it was recognized that the plat, the fill notation, the drainage easement agreement, and so on. In this current one that we got in our packet, Mr. Carroll noted that the final plat does not include the fill notation, and staff and the subdivider have not come to an agreement on the drainage easement. But that, you know, but you want us to approve something that's not quite, not done yet, and not the same as a preliminary. So therefore, I make a motion that we table this till we can have some more information.
Okay, a motion to table is not debatable, but we do need a second for a motion to table.
I have a question, being that I'm not here.
Well, first of all, do we have a second to the motion to table?
I'm not here in a second, that's why I have a question.
Pardon?
I'm not here in a second, that's why I have a question.
There is no second, so your motion fails. Okay, your question, Dan.
On this, a note shall be included on the final plat that makes future buyers of lots where the fill material has been placed in this parcel. I think that's kind of frivolous farce because that's regular fill dirt. I know there's been rumors floating around that it's been tires and lumber and stumps, and that is inaccurate. The tires that were there were used to get the heavy equipment over the curb, and the stumps are not buried in there. There is no stump dumped in there. This dirt was all brought in. It's clean dirt, some gravel in it. The gravel's down further. I just don't know why there's such a big stink about this.
May I ask a follow-up question for Brian? This is related, Dick. So let's just put that on the table. Let's say that the fill is bad fill. Does the city have any liability for that, should it end up being bad fill and somebody's personal property ends up being damaged because of it?
Well, with nothing more being said, I'd say no. I mean, I could conjure up a set of circumstances where if the city took their stumps and tires and, at the dead of night, drug them over there and left them off and buried them, yeah, I mean, then we would have something.
But assume the city didn't put the?
And I'm assuming they didn't either. So that's why I'm going to answer no. I don't think there's a liability issue for the city.
Okay, I do have a question. Originally, there was, there was the request for an easement across the property for the stormwater conveyance. Now with the developer's agreement, that stormwater easement is now part and parcel to this developer's agreement? Did I see that that was, that that's included?
We would want the stormwater easement, as we're calling it, to be noted on the plat and be part of the developer's agreement in terms of its installation, who's putting the pipe in, who's providing the pipe, who's going to cover the pipe, where we can put the rip wrap, that sort of thing. The nuts and bolts of it can go into the developer's agreement. The actual existence of the easement needs to be noted on the plat.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
And you correct me if I can, if I can't use this or I can use it. I discussed with Mr. Killian tonight before I came in. Can I use that info? Ask the? Can I use that inform- that information?
I mean, it's?
Secondary, but because he's not here. But he said if the snow is gone, I could go up there and look and you can actually see where the stumps were cut off level at the ground and that they're still there. They're visible once the snow is gone, okay? Now, discussing from a third party that was responsible for filling that in told me what some of the fill was in there. That's all hearsay, but that's, I'm answering Dick's question here. So, and Mr. Ready did say that it was construction material that were in there. Well, there's also, in part of the construction material in the roads, there were clay tiles that were all part of that. So that's why I'd like to have some more information. Thank you.
Paris, would you like to come to the?
My name is Paris Ready. I own this property that has been talked about at this moment for division into residential As an applicant here in front of you, presenting my side of the application, I would really respectfully urge the members to speak their questions and we'll try to answer that, I'll try to answer that question. I find it somewhat inappropriate to bring in another member who's not here, his presentation while he's not here, to present his views. Now, we all know Mr. Killian has been very, how would I say it, enthusiastically maybe presenting his view about what's in this property. I have developed a lot of properties. I've developed it in Dodgeville, I've developed it in Belmont Township, and I have owned as much as 600 acres at one time in Lafayette and Grant County. And I know the value of the property. It would be very dear to me to treat it in any manner that would ruin the value of the property. So I find it in some sort of, in a way insulting that someone would say there is stumps under the snow. Really, I mean, the snow can be removed now. Anybody wants to come and see it? I'll go. You show me where under the snow the stump might be and I'll dig out. The other thing I'm willing to, and I presented this option before, that any member in the city council believes that there is there, honestly believes that there is material substantial to construction there, let's go, let's hire a company that would come out and drill, take samples. And if the samples prove to be substantial, I'll pay for the cost of it. If it is not substantial, if it is standard for building, I would expect that someone else will pay for the cost of it. However, Eileen is not here, but she's a realtor by profession. In any application form, Mr. Knowles here would admit that time is of the essence. If we drag this on and at the end we find that these rumors, these innuendos were not substantiated, I have a cost. See, this street was developed in 2002 and accepted by the city in 2003. The encroachment of the drainage system happened then. When the city accepted it, someone within the city who is the responsibility to check and see what you're buying is kosher, should have noticed that there was an encroachment there, should have asked the developer then to remedy that so that we will not take this upon us. So when you're talking about liability, assuming that it's substantial, there was a liability there that was taken up without any question. So now, you know, we're talking about tabling maybe, you know, we're talking about taking more time to resolve this. I don't want to go to someplace where we all feel uncomfortable going. As far as I'm concerned, I'm the only developer in this county, maybe in this city for sure, that is a minority. And I'm not asking for a special recognition or a special treatment or anything like that. I'm asking to be judged at the same level that other property owners are judged in this town. Case in point is, look at a property in front of the bowling alley. That property is all fill. It's got a sale sign on it. That's going to be sold as a unit. Nobody, I don't see Mr. Killian racing around there with a flag saying, "Don't build here. There's potential for liability." Look at Mr. Johansson property, I believe right across from Runde Chevrolet. That's getting filled. Well, let's look at Benvenidos. I know that land very well. Years ago, when I was a student, I know the terrain of those fields. There used to be waterways. Right where Benvenido is, there was a waterway. If you look at the contours on that property, you will see how the terrain was. Today, if you look at it, there won't be any contour line on that whole area because it's all flat. That's all on fill.
Okay.
So why am I judged separately, differently, as opposed to all these other people?
On the fill issue, okay.
Yes.
Other, other question. First of all, I have a question. Howard, you can answer that this is the same five-lot division as was originally proposed on the, on the first plat?
I believe that, I believe that these five lots are the same that were, were approved, conditionally approved back in 2011 or whatever from the plan commission, 2009.
Okay, and so the reason now, the reason now it says six parcels is because of this easement drainage or whatever?
No, let me answer that question. Before, this parcel of land extended all the way to Southwest Row.
Okay.
I mean, Chestnut.
Chestnut Street.
Chestnut.
Right.
All the way to the far end, west end of the property. Now, I came here at some time and divided the lot because it, I didn't divide it, I take that back, because the corner lot on corner of Ready Drive and Chestnut was zone R three. So that was a separate lot altogether. In the original submission, that was included as the sixth lot. So, so that was eliminated.
Okay.
So when I came to the plan commission, I came clean with the five lots, starting over.
Okay.
So Mr. Delek, I'm sorry, I haven't mentioned that name. What Mike is talking about is a very old plat that had six lots in it.
Okay. And, just a minute, Brian and Howard, you're?
We're nodding our heads, we think that's correct.
Right, and I kind of remember that that one lot was different.
That property's been sold.
And that property isn't your property anymore.
You're right.
Okay.
And what I was saying, I didn't say it was six lots, okay? The wording, I can read it right out of Joe's part when I find it. The difference between the primary and the final, the wording was, the primary, let's see which one, which was which. One of them said there were six parcels and five lots, okay? And then the other one said there are five lots. I'm imagining that the one portion, the reason they call it parcel is the part they set aside for the drainage area. They call it a parcel. I will, let me dig it out of here, I'll have to go through my notes, but that's how it came to me in our paperwork, okay? So that's why I just, that's why I said the wording wasn't the same. So the primary plat has to be pretty same to the final plat.
Yes.
Okay. Otherwise, we need to go back to the planning commission and start all over because this happened a long time ago.
I would like to come with six lots if I can, not a five.
Yeah, no, and I did not say six lots because I saw six parcels. And if you have any more questions, go ahead and I'll dig this out of here. I've got it highlighted somewhere.
Hey, any questions?
No.
Dick?
Barb?
No.
Okay, do I hear, and Mike, you, that, the?
Here we go, right here. And this is on the back page of the part that was in the planning commission that was in our packet that was sent to us for this council meeting. It's part E. It would be on the second page, back, the second page.
This is from Monday, August fourth, 2011, the plan commission meeting.
Correct. And it says, in the first edition of Golden Heights, Paris Ready, and they have some PC eleven FPO two dash two zero, "Consider approval of the final plat to divide an existing outlot into six parcels. The application was submitted, a final plat that would be divided into five building lots to be developed for residential use." Okay, now that's in this one.
And Mike, as I understand it, it is six parcels, but only five of them are being asked for.
Uh, no.
Because the outlot was counting as one of the parcels?
No, they were all outlots.
No.
Yes, they were.
Well, sorry, look at the map.
Then he changed, everything, there was an outlot.
We're looking at the same map.
Then they were changed, okay?
Back in 2011, Paris, as I recall, that was all one outlot at one point in time.
Yes.
And at that point in time, because I was part and parcel to that, there were six, you divided it into six units, of which five were residential lots and one was an R three lot.
Yes, you're right.
And that sixth R three lot is now been sold. So that's no longer part of this final plat because you sold it.
That's right.
And so now you're talking about the five residential lots that remain that were created from that one large outlot.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So, anyway, with my, that was my discussion because the wording was different, okay?
And that's because one of those has been sold.
Okay.
Okay.
Because it didn't say that in our packet.
No, it didn't say that. You would have to know that.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I wasn't back there in 2011. Okay, so you're looking for a motion?
All right, and so I have a question. This would be a motion to approve the developers' agreement or to approve?
Final plat.
The final plat?
Contingent upon?
Contingent upon.
The developer and the city entering into a developers' agreement and the final plat showing the dedication of the drainage way to the city plat bill. And then we will take care of the nuts and bolts of the installation of that pipe in the developers' agreement.
So that's not part of the motion then, right, Brian?
Right, no, it's contingent upon?
The final plat approval.
Accepting the final plat, contingent on the development of a developer, the signing of a developers' agreement between the city and the developer that includes the installation of the storm water?
Culvert.
Culvert.
Unit or whatever.
Culvert.
Culvert. Okay.
I'd like to, go ahead, Paris.
Just one more, just so, the powerhouse is still here, we should talk just a little bit about the agreement. Mr. Carroll and I have worked on this agreement and I believe Mr. McGraw has drafted it and we talked about it. We're, we're very agreeable on the, as the agreement is laid out as it is now, as the last draft I received. The only thing I would ask that your attorney or the city consider is the, the time when the city will install this culvert and finish the end cap on it or riprap. And the amount of filling will be on top of the culvert because I would not like the culvert just sit there on the open with the riprap at the end so that when, when I start filling it at my shift or then, because eventually, at the end of the day, city's improvement is the city's infrastructure. So I don't want to be, you know, taking the responsibility of filling it from the ground up. I'd like to have some sort of fill over the culvert so that it's stationary and I'll take it off beyond that.
Well, it says in the developer, in the draft that I see, "The city shall at no cost to the developer extend the existing storm sewer culvert, install riprap, and construct an end wall from Ready Drive to the northern board boundary of the subdivision." There is no date and I don't think it's up to the, to the council to install a date there or to put a date in there. It's going to have to be?
Staff, city intends to have this done this year and the?
This year meaning by December 31st, 2015, or?
It would be sooner than that. I would have, I would have to look at it, but I, it would be early summer.
Well, it does say, comma, 2015, so that would lead the council to believe it would be done in 2015. And I believe it would be up to the city staff and you, Paris, to negotiate that date, but it looks to me like issue, you know, it looks to me like that's covered in this draft.
I just would like to be on the record saying that I'd like to have it, you know, maybe by June if we can do it because most of the construction takes place in summer, then I can do the rest of the filling. Otherwise, if you do it by end of the year, almost towards the end of the year, then I'm another year behind.
Well, again, I think that's really, that's really a discussion that you should have.
It's a nuts and bolts, we'll figure it out.
Part of the motion should include that we allow the staff to finalize the developers' agreement?
Yeah.
That's not part of the motion, is it?
I think it should be, should it be?
Right, it's approval of the final plat contingent on?
The developers' agreement.
The developers' agreement.
That will be finalized by staff.
By staff and signed by the, by the city and by the developer, and it will include the extension of the storm sewer. Is that correct?
Shouldn't we approve the final plat first and then the developers' agreement?
No, we're not approving the developers' agreement. We're approving the final plat contingent on?
A developers' agreement, all right.
Yep.
Because I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the final plat, first edition to Golden Heights with the addition of the, that it would include the fill notation and a drainage easement agreement and this being contingent with the developers' agreement.
Contingent upon, I don't believe that's what you were saying.
So Mike has said, accept the final plat with the note on the final plat that there's fill material on the lot and that it's contingent on the developers' agreement and the installation of storm sewer.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Can we have Jan read back the motion?
I, I, he's accepted the final plat with a note on the final plat about the fill.
Mm-hmm.
And, I don't know, that's all I've?
And the drainage easement?
And contingent on the development of a developer, or the signing of a developers' agreement between the developer and the city?
That the staff?
That includes the storm sewer.
Yes.
And that the staff has the authority to finalize the developers' agreement. Okay, got that?
Edit my, edit that to, the staff has the right to finalize the developers' agreement.
Why do we have to make this so long and complicated?
They told me that's what we had to do.
Just a plain, simple motion to accept the recommendation of the staff.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
It appears there's confusion.
And we have a motion and a second. Jan, again?
I can't read it back, I'm sorry.
So you want to cancel the motion?
Brian had very good language to begin with.
This language is different than the language Brian presented. I just want you to know that.
That, the addition that I see to the language Brian presented was that the notation for fill be added to the final plat.
That's the gist of what I understand, yeah.
All right, so would you like to repeat?
It's, it's on the audio, we can go back and play it for the minutes.
All right, so basically, it's approve the final plat. The only addition that's not on this paper was from the original plan commission of August one, 2011. A note shall be included on the final plat that makes future buyers aware of the lots, where that fill materials had been placed on these parcels. And then it's the contingent on the development, developers' agreement and its signing, which includes the storm sewer.
And with the developers' agreement, I feel that what we've discussed is that we are giving staff the authority to finish that developers' agreement and does not need to come back to council for approval. Is that what other people have heard as well?
Do they generally?
That's what I'm understanding.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we had a motion. Barb, we had a second.
Yes.
We'll vote.
Bonan?
Yes.
Seaboth Wilson?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we will now go on to information and discussion. This is the appeal of a certificate for appropriateness denial for 130 Market Street.
Can I make a comment on our previous motion?
Can I make a comment on our previous motion? I think the motion should be used on all other building plots, too.
Oh.
It's just a comment, not a follow-through.
Okay. No, I think we've moved on to the next agenda item. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the appeal of a certificate of appropriateness denial. And who has?
I'll try to fill in. Joe is out again. So, the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed a certificate of appropriateness application for 130 Market Street. There's been an opinion of the Historic Preservation Commission to deny the certificate of appropriateness. I believe the understanding was that the porch that is being proposed on this building does not fit the Preservation Commission's understanding of what the building was originally looked like. And so there's some discrepancy as to the design of the porch in the front of the building. Included in your packet, you'll see the minutes of the Historic Preservation Commission that explains the situation. You'll also see the front of the building in a picture. And then the second picture is the proposed porch, which covers approximately half of the building, next to the rounded-out architectural feature. Next to that is the floor plan, the layout, and then a couple of historic photos. And I want to draw your attention as a council to the second historic photo that says circa 1907. It says 110 Market Street. You'll notice that house has a really large front porch. That is not the house in question. The house in question is the one to the left, which shows the porch under construction. So the front porch was under construction in 1907 for the neighboring house, which is the house that we're considering this evening. Actually, it's on for information and discussion. The applicant would make the statement that the porch was not original to the house, and you can see that it's been constructed 20, 30 years after the house was built. I, I can't, I can't mark these as facts in my, I haven't researched the facts. What I'm saying is that's the applicant's opinion, and what they're presenting to staff. I'm really glad that this is on for information and discussion, so that at your next meeting, we can have both the applicant, as well as Joe Carroll, represent staff's opinion on this matter. Is there any questions or follow-up that you would like before our next meeting?
Okay, Larry, you might explain that when the Historic Preservation Commission denies someone's application, that the appeal process is directly to the council, which is why it's coming to the council, rather than going to plan commission or some other place. So that is the appeal process that was set up in the development of the Historic Preservation Commission. I would urge anybody who has questions about this, or wants more information about this, to seek that out prior to the next meeting. It does appear that the house on Market Street was already built. It looks like there's curtains in that window, but who knows? It's a 1907 photo. So does anybody have any immediate questions about this? Otherwise, again, please contact Joe and/or Larry to get additional information. I've asked to see if there's another photo.
Right, and I, I did meet with the applicant, and I can confirm that they have done exhaustive searches, and have visited the historic room on campus, and, and they just can't turn up any additional photos. What, what photos there are, are included in your packet, one of which is a shot or a view all the way across City Park, obstructed by numerous trees. And the other one is of the neighbor's house, which shows the property in question in the background. I'm afraid that that's probably as good of photographs as we're gonna get.
That concludes the information and discussion item, unless anybody- So we will now, we're, move into a work session. It is the evening of our quarterly meeting with UW Platville, and I see that the chancellor is here, and that a couple of his, three or four people are with him. So, thank you all, and if y'all can stay around, I think we'll probably move to the table.